We have to call this meeting back to order. The library trustees are meeting. Should we have a roll call for the...
Sure, okay.
Neil Cole, library director. LeAnn Hammond, trustee.
Chef Ferguson, trustee.
Daniel Pritchard, trustee.
All Blue Leaf Cafe.
Mike Ambon, trustee.
Cam Brown, assistant director.
Alright, so we can start with the first item on agenda, the secretary's report. I have a couple things, Daniel.
No, okay. I was on a roll. No, it's okay.
That is leaving here.
Under the director's report.
Yes.
So the project literacy grant.
Yes.
So it says, this call raises a question of whether the board should have the voice on the Friends of Project Literacy. I would say whether the board should have approval over, approval authority over Friends of Project Literacy grant applications. And I would prefer that the literacy staff focus on programming. I'm not referring to the Friends there. And then it's a Marshall Home Fund application. So that's what I had on that.
Marshall Home Fund?
Marshall Home Fund, yes.
Any other...
That's it for that.
Make your motion to accept the minutes of much. Fifth, as needed. Second.
So, then second then. Then, all in favor?
Aye.
So, next with the public forum. Nobody's signed up, so we'll move on. And Red Leaf Cafe update, Tom.
Good evening everyone. Glad to be here the last couple of times, you guys want an executive session, so get me out of here. Glad to be here tonight. Everything is going very well in the cafe. Doing some book sales and video sales. We've got a lot of DVDs downstairs and that's been going out the door right now. As the DVDs or movies that we have are now one dollar instead of two dollars and people are buying more. Trying to encourage them to buy more movies as well. Even trying to encourage the staff to buy more. Sale is a sale. But other than that, everything's going very well in the cafe. Business is, pric-- you know, picked up lately. With the, I guess, everything coming in order with the employees already. Other menu items that I had, it's going very well, so I'm very pleased with that. I'd hope to be able to take some time off, at least a day or two, and I'll update you guys on that. Probably like one day. Other than that, I'll be working on the, at the next meeting, I think, in three months, something for the next meeting. Because I had one previously, but do not have that one today. Other than that, everything's going very well.
Okay.
I have one question. At the last couple of meetings, we've, whether directly or indirectly, gotten a little bit of grief from benches at the library about kids.
Right.
Are you able to sort of calm them down if they get very excited? And it's not the fun thing to do. I wouldn't be good at it. But you're cognizant of that issue now, right?
Yeah, I receive an email from patrons. I'll go ahead and see if it'll link. I would want to respond to that. I mean, with the kids, as I said before, the library is a very powerful library. And with the kids, it's, I think it's, I mean, I can do what I can do. But I run a business and I am not in the counseling business of counseling kids. I don't know what to do. My first thing is to try to run a business and try to keep order, at some type of order, as far as, you know, having the kids quiet down, you know, if they get really excited. I think I told you, this is my recess to them. It's time to have fun. But at some point, they are kicked out of the cafe. But I'm limited to what I can do as a business owner, because this is, the library is the whole.
You know, you do serve kind of an informal double function. You say you're not a counselor, but you still are to a number of these kids. A role model, somebody they talk to. So you do have that function.
Yeah.
One of the reasons we like what you're doing, that's why I like what you're doing, not to speak for other people, is that you serve that function and that it's terrific and I've seen that go on in the cafe, so.
I definitely understand that. I mean, I don't know what it is. I think, come in, you see me. I have no idea what it is that I bring out, or they want to come in here and see me. I really, I have to ask myself, I'm kind of, in some ways it's kind of nice, but in some other ways, it's not nice. I mean, I have a lot of adults coming here and think it's cute, but it's, sometimes it's not cute. Because I want to like tell them, you know, go into the teens room, and I ask them to leave to go into the teens room, but, and I ask them why they don't want to go into the teens room. And it's a good question I probably should ask. They just love the cafe more than they love the teen room. And that's just it. And I asked them to go down to Boys and Girls Club. Again, it's the same thing. The Boys and Girls Club made a sort of effort to renovate. And they came in and asked me like, what should we do to attract them? And, you know, again, I couldn't tell you, I'm not a teenager. So I couldn't tell you what you should do to attract the teens. Like I said, this is nothing but recess to them and they want to have fun. So their ages between 12 and 14. The older teenagers tend to taper off at a certain point. The older you get, they taper off and you either find something else to do. But the ones that you hear are in the cafe are between 12 and 14 years old. And sometimes they are out of control, even in the teens room. And, but again, I'm limited to what I can do. I'll take advice on if there's anything that people think I should do to try to discourage or them from, you know, coming to the cafe. But I even limit it to times. You know, they come into the cafe and spend a certain amount of time and kind of leave. And, but they know that the one policy they are kind of aware of is like, you have to be eating. And if you're eating something, they kind of are aware that they can stay. So they would buy something and they would take their time eating it. So they just, they find a way around these things.
So the next rule is they should keep it in their house.
They find a way around it. They're very brave. They find a way around different rules when they want to do something other than that. But I know, I understand the seriousness of it, of the matter. And even when they leave the cafe, they're noisy and I try to calm them down. But again, there's only so much I can do with them, with you in the cafe. When they're in the cafe, I try to keep them as quiet and calm and respectful to the other people who are in there. I mean, that's the first thing I have to do, make sure that they're respectful to the other adults inside the cafe that want to enjoy. Even the adults that probably want to come into the cafe but see them here and like turn around going to another direction. I know that can be overwhelming. But I do ask them to leave. I mean, as the school year tickles down and the weather increases, well, you're not going to have that problem. They're going to be outside, they're going to find other things to do. They won't be coming by harder, the school will be out. But during the time when it's winter, this, you know, you can't kick them out. And, you know, there's only so much you can do. But I'm open to any other ideas. Or anything, you know, working with the Boys and Girls Club, that might be something that could be done. But there's, I don't know what else to do, other than to try to ask them to.
Yeah, I wondered if that would improve the situation, just the fact that that nice space is opened up over there. Have you noticed any differences this year?
The thing with that is they don't go down there because they consider eating goes down. And these are 12 and 14, don't want to hang away girls. So that's the thing. Computers is a big thing, but computers are a big thing for the boys, not necessarily for the girls. So the girls are on computers, but not as frequently as boys that are playing games and stuff like that. But I understand that. I really wish there was something else I can do. But again, this is recess to them. It's not, it's not even, it's just recess. It's sometimes, these are the things that are, it's like going to their school during lunchtime and you're in the lunch cafeteria. This is the noise that you're going to hear and, you know.
Could there not be a policy about noise levels specifically, so that you, at your discretion, could ask them to leave?
Well, yeah, there is. I mean, once, you know, I totally calm down and relax and, but that only goes so far.
Well, you can ask them to leave?
Yeah, I absolutely, but the term that I have is that they want to come into the cafe.
Sure.
So they get banned. Like I had one kid banned for a month. Another kid banned for three weeks because they did something that was, you know, a little outrageous and they were disrespectful to some of the customers that were there. So that's what they're scared of. They don't want to be banned. They don't want to be kicked out.
So maybe it's a question of where you draw the line about enforcing that and they might adjust their behavior to stay within.
Yeah, they adjust their behavior. Once they realize, once they realize they're either about to be kicked out, they adjust their behavior and they either behave better or they listen. But it's only with the threat of, you know, being kicked out of the cafe that that's when they decide to adjust their behavior. But, you know, like I said, open to ideas. If anybody has any other ideas or any solutions to that, you know, I'll work with you on that to implement them. But again, I'm trying to also do it in business as well, so, and that's kind of difficult to do that and to monitor teenagers.
We appreciate your efforts.
So can we meet on Friday, you and Caitlin and me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so on the financial report. I have the MUNIS report and there are plenty of reports here. And I just had a question on the MUNIS, the stop the donor bill.
Yep.
It's at 24% now. Is that on track or we?
Yeah, we do have plans to, to figure the rest of that.
I figured those prices.
Yep.
And also, I know that, I wasn't here last month, but in the minutes I noticed that the funds for some of the 150th gala expenses were coming from the Griffin. Was that moved over from Griffin or?
No, we'll just spend it from Griffin. We don't have to move it.
Okay, so it's not showing up in that? It's just, okay.
Yeah, so we'll spend, so the donations that come in are going to the building committee, with the exception of one, with the exception of the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
So all of that is going into the building committee. We will spend that. And then we have to spend from the Griffin fund.
We'll go to the Griffin.
Go to the Griffin fund after that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so on the Watertown Donor Chamber of Commerce donation, you have a letter.
Yes.
In your packet, so we would just need to accept that.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept that.
Make a motion to accept the donation from the Watertown Chamber of Commerce?
Second.
I'll make the motion. Make the motion to accept the Chamber of Commerce check.
And then, any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we need a motion to accept the financial report?
That would be great.
Make a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the chairman's report. The chairman isn't here, so. What about that? And the director's report?
Okay, great, thank you. So first of all, we've got a couple of grants. And first of all, the ADA Improvement Grant. Caitlin sent you a memo in the packet about the ADA Grant progress. And what we had put in the original grant was that we would find $5,000 in local funding. Successfully got $2,500 from the Committee on Disability. And so we're asking for $2,500 from Lake Meg to finish that grant out.
Make the motion to accept the transfer?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. And then we have two grants, grant applications to the Watertown Community Foundation. One from the Friends of Project Literacy and then one from Hatch. So they're both, I believe, in the amount of $5,000, close to?
Yeah.
Forty-eight hundred for literacy, 5,000 for Hatch. So I would ask to approve those two grant applications.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, update on the door project as the town manager moved into earlier. So there was $120,000 as a placeholder in the capital improvement program. And that was really to replace the doors as is. But as you know, that evolved into a more complicated and more expensive proposition. And the low bid came in at $420,000 to do what we need to do. So what's happening at this point is that the town auditor is asking for an extension from the vendor so that the town manager can figure out when it would be appropriate to go to the town council for funding for that. So that's, at this point, our hold.
How much of an increase was this over what you had estimated?
So 120 to 420.
I guess 420?
Oh, 240. 120 to 240. Sorry, I got that. 120, so double.
400 was.
Double.
And let me ask you, you set the bids up to, did you go to ours or?
Oh, yeah, well, I didn't, but the purchasing agent did, yes. And they got two bids.
Two?
Two.
And they were within?
Yeah, pretty close.
Wow.
Yeah, and 240 was the lowest.
I mean, the draw is complicated.
No, it's just that it's a small job.
Really?
Yeah. Small jobs don't attract much business. So I'll keep you updated on that.
So just to clarify, went from 120 to 240?
Well, 120, like I said, 120 was really just to replace the doors as they are now.
Okay.
That's what the placeholder was.
Right.
And then as we went through the process of figuring out what we needed and what we wanted, it became bigger. So it became, we're going to make it more energy efficient. We're going to make sure that the circuitry will add more. So we had an HVAC there. And then the doors, we came, we need a bigger vestibule, so we push it out. So then I'll, you know, play into that bigger number. So I have one more thing under my report, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I don't know if everyone got it yet, but I sent out, Natasha sent out the email, I know trespass order. And the person who has been banned called this afternoon and would like to set up an appeal. So it's a two-week ban, so we need to do that pretty quickly. And I was wondering if we could do it sometime late Friday afternoon, if people would be available to do it then. Say, 4:00 Friday. Would people be available then?
I could just work on Friday.
I believe I can.
Okay, Daniel?
Yeah, I believe I can.
Alright, so let's set that up for Friday at 4:00. Okay, and that's it on that. Alright. So on to old business, the anniversary update. Okay, so it really looks like we're going to have probably 500 people.
Excellent.
A little scared.
Why out the door? Get a doggy robe added to the budget.
Have you added 10 to that budget?
Yeah.
What's the capacity of our spaces?
827.
That's the whole place.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're making arrangements, hopefully, for additional parking in St. Pat's. I haven't heard yet for sure. But we'll also have a police officer or two or 15 outside to direct traffic and try to, you know, make sure that people have a place to park. So other than that, we're, you know, on the verge of panic, but we're going to be fine. And it's going to be an awesome event, so it's looking good.
Is the town drawing in the police detail for free?
The outside, not the inside one. We have to have one for the, because we got a one-day liquor license. So we will be serving beer and wine and so we need to have someone inside. So that's $212 out of our budget, which is hard to figure.
How did the fundraising go?
We're at about, over $13,000, so that's nothing.
That includes the bag?
Yes.
Yep.
So, yeah, so I hope you all have your fabulous duds ready for Saturday evening.
I do think you're not supposed to buy any Volkswagen's in Watertown. Because they were just unresponsive.
Well, I don't have to talk about that, yeah.
Out of curiosity, have we reached out to the globe, like social photographer?
Yes.
Yeah, we've done all that stuff.
We've done all that, yeah. So hopefully we get some good things.
A nice occasion.
Do we have any VIPs coming or like people that we invited and responded?
Yeah.
Oh, good, good. And I have all these speakers.
The biggest.
You know, maybe you should speak in place of me.
I'm dancing.
Caitlin's going to sing. So when we were testing out the microphones, Caitlin sang.
And she's going to look fabulous in her dress.
Town manager's going to wear jeans.
That'll be a first, right?
Alright, okay, that's it. On to new business. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just roughly, what is the plan for the, because it's seven to nine period?
Yeah, remarks are going to be at 7:30.
Okay, you're doing stuff all day there, right?
No, no, we're doing stuff all year, but on that day, it's just 7:00. Yeah. And we have a fantastic book for everyone to sign. We had a book made specially for the 150th anniversary for everyone to sign.
Oh, great.
Which is really awesome.
I see the Watertown resident, the book writer that we did, so.
Is Susan staying?
Is what?
Susan's staying for the, or, no, Susan, yes, Susan Riley.
Oh, no.
No.
She's going out.
No, she's not, no, she'll be, yeah. Thursday here and gone.
Yeah.
Great. On to new business, library director evaluation. Daniel, you're collecting?
I have collected all but two. I'll follow up with the two.
And the request to reestablish and re-brick, oh, great.
Okay, so you all got an email from a library patron who wanted to expand the, or reestablish the brick program. So it is, it's not insignificant to do that. So what I said in my memo to you, if you do want to reinstate the program, I have some recommendations for that. And to back up a little bit, we do have other fundraising opportunities, starting at $250, whether they have a name on a plaque in the library or on the glass wall. But to do the brick program, it would be my recommendation that if you want to do that, we should only offer one brick size and that we should charge $125 per brick and we only do it once per year. So say that people can put in their orders all year long, but we would only start that process on March 1st, say, and, you know, get the orders all together, send them in bulk, try to get a lower price, get all the bricks together and then do that at one time. So that's, those would be my recommendations.
Is that currently posted on the website or?
No, no, we don't have anything on the website about it because we're not, we're not doing it.
When you say the cost to us at this point is $50, is that some $50 per brick?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah, that's a one-off brick.
For the, okay, so that's for engraving and everything?
Yeah. Yeah, not installation, not installation, just, you know, you send us, here's what we want in the brick and they send it to us.
That actually feels like maybe we're putting the donation point too low.
That feels like to me.
Yeah, well, it's just, you know, the cost is nearly 50%. That seems like that maybe it's not the most effective use of someone's donation.
Well, see, and that's what we don't know.
Yeah.
Like, that's why we continue, because it's not really that cost-effective, you know, the administrative and so on.
And the glass option is better.
How much is it to have the?
250.
It's 250?
Yeah. That's a minimum to afford the rest of.
Do you think if we put the minimum for bricks at 250, people would?
Probably would do it.
So we're just, that much to wipe out the program?
Yeah, I think they're looking for a lower cost option.
How popular was the brick program when it was?
It was, when we did it, it was fairly popular. It wasn't like overwhelming. But, yeah, the people who liked it really liked it. I mean, there are some people who just love that kind of thing.
I know where it, there's been talk in the past, I don't remember where we are on this in a timeline, but doing work on the patio area, where would these bricks be going? Would they be out front or would they be?
Yeah, they would still be out front.
So would it make sense to kind of do it in conjunction with something like when we fix up the patio?
Well, then just do it for, like, that's very nicely.
Oh, okay, so, alright, so.
But, I mean, they are in, I mean, the bricks themselves are in sand. So it's not a huge deal, but if we have like 100 bricks, we wouldn't have our local, our custodians do that.
I was just thinking it made more sense when it was like part of the building.
Potential.
Finite, but, I mean, there are, like, because if you look out there, they're not, not every single brick has a name on it, so.
I haven't counted.
Yeah, I mean, there are at least, at least a few, more than 100, like a couple hundred, I think, possibilities.
I'd love to see the cost not be so close to half of the donation. That just feels, I mean, what do you think, best guess? What do you think people would be open to, you know, if we increased it by 25 or 50 dollars? Would that probably eliminate the program as well or?
I think, I think you'd still have people do it for $150. I don't think you'd... I don't think any more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it feels more like people want to get their name on bricks than actually get their weight to go up there.
I was going to say that, maybe. I don't know, I just thought.
I mean, you know, you have your name.
I mean, it's nice, but it is, I don't, I agree that the cost isn't really worth, like, what, it's really creating more trust.
Yeah, so it's fifty dollars plus any administrative or whatever, so, yeah, it feels. And boy, do a hundred and fifty, you feel like enough of an increase to make.
Well, see, if that goes to the building committee, it doesn't go to us. So it's still, you know, we don't get compensated, it's just, we have to work it into our schedules.
Well, I would make a motion that at least we increase the price of bricks by twenty-five dollars.
If we're going to.
No, it would reestablish, yeah. It's not currently, you know.
I mean, it just seems like the sort of thing that you do when you're doing, like, the renovations.
That is why you did that, and to just open it up, just because, it doesn't, I don't think it seems cost-effective,
because you would get a lot more interest with, you know, back then, I'm sure you did.
Yeah.
Maybe you've got somebody who want to give an up, so you can put their name on the building.
Which brick do you want?
The one in the corner.
Yeah, it feels, I mean, this feels like it creates work for folks, and it doesn't bring in a ton of money, and it's not a great cost-effective way of donating to the library, anyway.
Right.
I see that it's a fun program, but I don't know that I would necessarily use it.
I agree, and I assume that you made note to disband anyone else who's interested in bricks, that the option of the glass wall brick is there?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, no, that's it now, okay.
Out of interest, there were, there are some architects who are charging, you know, substantial money to do the estimating on the cost of all this. Have they been used, aren't they?
Yeah, they are the on-call architects for the town. You mean for the doors?
Yeah, because they were being, also, they were willing to price out the thing, right?
Yeah.
So they've done that.
Yes.
And they're the people who can bring in the vendors, the two vendors.
Well, no, the, it gets advertised in the, in the state, what's it called, Goods and Services. So, yeah, they don't recruit, they, yeah, the purchasing agent takes care of that advertising.
And thanks Caitlin for the memo about the protections page. So are there any requests for information? Shall we go around, Daniel? Sure.
I'll set.
I'll set.
Good, good, thank you.
And on to the date of the next meeting.
I have a request, could we postpone it, switch it to the thirteenth next month? I am hoping to go away the first. Could we do it the thirteenth?
I'll be away the first day, it's a perfect day.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think the thirteenth sounds good.
That's Monday, May thirteenth?
Yeah.
It's okay here.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, May thirteenth.
For our next meeting, should I note the meeting on Friday here?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
All right, motion for adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.